Just of making sure we talk loud so the mic picks us up. And you hear me all right, fellas?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We will call the Grant County Board Commissioners to order Monday, May 4th at 10:00 a.m. And just for the fun of it, Mr. Auditor, would you read the roll call and make sure everybody's here? I will do that. Mr. Burton?
Present.
Mr. Mallory?
Here.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Present.
Thank you. I know that you gentlemen aren't in the room, but we'll go ahead for our front call sake. I'll lead us in a word of prayer and then I'm going to ask our auditor, he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All right? You stay with me for a word of prayer.
Okay.
Heavenly Father, as we take these moments, we're grateful for signs of hope, not only in spring, but for this pandemic that we have been going through. We pray, Father, for our community that you will grant wisdom as we stretch and to get back into normal life. We ask for protection. We ask for continued guidance, that your will will be accomplished, not only in our community, but in each of our lives. I pray in Jesus' name. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. All right. Under current claims, minutes, payroll, the claims and amounts had preapprovals from April, the 27th. And the highway batch was $29,920.59. The general batch was $40,453.39. And the other batch, $92,794.64. For a grand total of $163,168.62. And then we also had a single preapproval for a visa that was regarding suit two and the amount of $1,277.77. And again, those have been preapproved and we need to ratify those amounts if you so desire, gentlemen.
I move to approve the preapproved claims payment.
Mr. Burton, do you support that?
This lost Mark.
His phone still seems to be connected. Mike, can you hear us? It bounced off. We can do one of two things right now, Ron, while Kevin's trying to reconnect. We can approve or we can wait till Mike comes back on, whatever you prefer.
Whatever your preference, Mike, I don't care. I move to approve those preapproved payment for those claims. So you really need to second.
Yeah, I can second that.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
Seconded that and we're calling right now. I'll see if Mike picks back up and we're in good shape.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Mike, you're back with us?
Yes, for some reason the signal dropped.
All righty. Well, while we were recalling you, Ron made a motion to ratify the preapprovals and I seconded it. So right now we're ready for discussion or we're ready to vote?
Okay.
Let's uh...
Mark?
All those in favor would say aye through the roll call. Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, we've taken care of our preapprovals. We have today's, May 4th, claims and amounts. The general fund request, or excuse me, general billing, $85,448.28. The other batch, $14,964.24. Highway batch, $24,948.40. For a grand total of $125,360.92. And we would need a motion to approve those claims.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Burton?
I would second that.
Support by Mr. Mallory? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do the roll call for approval. Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Thank you. We've paid those bills and we also have the preapproval for payroll number nine. That was in the amount of $499,858.94. And that was first on May the 1st. We need a motion to ratify the payroll preapproval.
So moved.
I would second that.
Mr. Mallory supports that? Any further discussion on payroll? All righty, we will call for the roll call. Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We've taken care of our claims and payroll. Just with your permission again, I have signed these claims. And with your permission, we'll instruct our county administrator to stamp your names on those claims as well.
Okay.
I agree.
All righty. We will go next in our agenda, number four, receipt of monthly report. We have a monthly report from the clerk reports, month ending March 31st of 2020. That's her standard report to us on a monthly basis. And we need to receive that if you are comfortable with that.
Okay, I move that we... Go ahead, LeBron.
No, that's it. I was just going to say I approve, I moved that we approved that monthly report.
And I'll second that.
Motion, Mr. Mallory, second, Mr. Burton, to receive the monthly report of clerk reports. Let's just go right to the roll call if we have any questions. Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, we will move right along in the agenda, communication board updates. Anything from the auditor's office right there?
I can just make just a brief statement, this is a reminder really to our public, I guess. Property tax payments are due May the 11th, I believe it is, that Monday. And I know that you can go until 60 days after that, which is July 10th, and pay without penalty. We are encouraging people to pay it on time. But I wanted to really stress this, we have a lot of taxpayers that are part of the TIP districts, if you will. And a lot of those TIP districts have, you know, bond payments and so forth associated with them. So I know I had one call from one of our large taxpayers who were in the TIP payment. They were a little surprised that they needed to get that paid by the due date, make sure they get their bond obligations paid. So I guess I want to make sure, encourage our various cities and towns that have TIP, I guess, TIP areas where they have taxpayers paying for that. And the taxpayers associated, they need to make sure they pay those on time because if you have bond payments associated with it, that waiver penalty, if you don't pay the money, doesn't waive your bond payment obligation. So I just want to make sure, stressing to people, while we understand this is an unusual time and there are waivers and all and so forth. But as much as you can, especially those in TIP areas, those payments probably should be made timely so that the bond payment obligation is getting paid timely as well. That was a reminder.
Thank you for pointing that out, absolutely. We also had heard from election office, but today is the last day for voter registration. And we would also note that it is possible for you to vote absentee. In fact, the local election board as well as the state election board are encouraging as many people to vote absentee as possible to help us. Again, the contact, slowing down the spread of the virus, so encourage the public in that way as well.
I think I remember seeing an email from the Nancy Brown, I believe, about needing workers and so forth too. So I'm sure they're looking to try to fill those spots and best.
All right, any other elected official in the room or on the phone system with us that wants to bring a report? Okay, hearing none, we will move to, we do have one IT fellow with us, anything to share with us, Kevin? He's not asking for any money today, guys, that's good.
That is good.
Yeah.
Highway report and Dave White is in the room with us, so he's going to sit down. He's carrying a bunch, is this bridge report?
Yes.
Bridge inspection?
I was thinking the same thing, he's carrying an armload of stuff.
So like you gentlemen, I'll give our phase two bridge inspection reports, I'll just put them on your desk. Circumstances, usually they go everything, over everything for the year. I got this last week, it's the second phase of our four-year period. And I'll just lay these on your desk so you can get them later, later date. I guess you're isolated, it'll give you something to read or something really important.
Okay.
The one question I would have over the, do we have any new bridges that move into a critical structure problem?
Yeah, it's funny you said that because yes, about a week ago I had a bridge that got a hole in the deck. I had to close it down this week. On County Road 1,000 East, just north of 200 North. Got to meet with the consulting firm today to see what the best possible repair or total replace. Got quite a bit of damage to it. I would say it might be total replacement.
Now, when you bring reports like that, critical infrastructure problems, that's the ones that go to right at the beginning.
Yeah, I was going to say, and this one, I'll be honest with you, it didn't have that really bad a report in October, but it did get a hole in the deck and it's substantial.
Once it starts deteriorating, it just goes, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That's what I actually said, I wondered if it was a prior report as a flag.
No, it wasn't. That's a, it basically is scaled from one to 10, it was a five pretty much on the whole structure. We had a bad spot. We have it closed right now, so hopefully we can get that right here. The concrete overlay that I brought up last meeting, that Mr. Bartlett was nice to sign with the state for me. I got back looking at the contract and I reviewed it and it was the wrong contract. So I submitted to the state, we're supposed to pay 50% of the $193,000. I was paying 25%. So I thought I'd be nice and tell them that they made a mistake, so they sent me the right contract.
So I need to sign a new?
Right, yes.
Better for us.
Yeah, no.
Did they agree to split the difference?
Well, I hope in the future they remember that we told them that they gave us the wrong contract.
This is an item that we've already approved, we're just resigning.
Right. After I got to look in, we have to pay 50% of the $193,000. When I got back and I got to looking, ready to scan it, send it to them, I thought, this says 25%. I contacted them, they said, thank you.
All right, we completed that, do we need that?
And then going along with this, I would like to set a bid date of June 1st for these two, these two bridge construction projects. Set it for having the bids in by 9:00 a.m. on June 1st, if that's all right for concrete overlays.
By 9:00 a.m. that way we can actually open, read them on that day.
Yeah.
Does that, does that sit well with you, gentlemen? We can consent to that or you can make a motion to that effect as well, whichever you prefer?
Yes, I consent. I consent as well.
Very good. We will, Claire, that we'll have our bid openings on June 1st, 10 o'clock. You have to receive them by June 1st at 9:00. Very good. Contact them and all that, to others also.
Update you on our paving projects, we've got County Road 600 West done, County Road 500 North done. Housing addition, Woodland Heights is done. We are paving Bow Lane addition today, hopefully we completed around noon, 1:00 with that. Our goal is to get 38th Street from Marion City Limits to just west of Roseburg paved this week. And also Miller Avenue from 38th Street to 50th Street, 32. Try and get them done this week, whether we're operating. Going along with a little bit on the paving, I was questing, make sure it's all right. We've been talked to from Bayburn, um, Bayburn, Upland, Matthews, and probably Fairmount, I'd say in the future. While we're doing some paving projects, their roads kind of connect with our roads. Make sure it's all right, we haul the mix and build them for the material and the fuel like we have in the past.
Yes, we have done that in the past, it's been very helpful to municipalities. I think it's a good practice to continue if you gentlemen would agree to that.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
And the only other thing I wanted to bring up is I have a dump truck that I found, a used one. 2007 International that only has 58,000 miles on it. It belonged to Allen County Parks Department. I don't know how they, anyways, it was bigger than what they needed. And I got a price of $53,500. And what I'd like to use this truck for is put stone down on our new paved roadways. It's got a different type of bed on it and stuff like that.
Dave, is that a, how big a truck is that as far as axles?
It's a tandem truck.
Okay, okay.
2007, it looks to be at least on the exterior, good running order, what about the motor?
It's a Cummins motor, so it's a little bit bigger than what we usually run, but I think that'll be better in the long run.
Um, are you just, gentlemen, on phone only or are you on video at all?
No, I'm on, I'm on a phone call.
Same with me.
With 58, that was, that's, that's not, that's not many miles at all for a Cummins diesel. That's, that's real decent miles.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I went up and drove it, it was in Decatur, Indiana. I went up and drove it, went and looked at it twice. And it has a different apron on the back that most trucks don't, so I think it'll work out great for what we need.
I guess the other question we usually ask is, do you have money in an account to pay for this?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Well, I would approve of that purchase, Mark.
Yeah, same with me.
Why don't we make a formal motion to purchase this 2007 International?
I'll make the motion, yeah, second.
They both, they both made the motion, they both seconded. That'll be interesting to see in the minutes, but we do have a motion with support. Any further discussion? Mr. Auditor, would you read the roll call, please? Should I ask them, why ask them? Mr. Burton? Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye, thank you.
All right, what else, David?
That's all I have today. Mr. Mallory, I'm going to go up and talk to Mr. Todd right now, so I might be calling you here this afternoon if you're going to be around.
I will be, I've talked to, or changed text with BB. And I've talked to Dr. Wes Ball Saturday. And they're kind of anxious to hear from us, so you keep me posted and I'll keep them posted.
All right, all right, appreciate it.
Any other questions, David?
Hearing none, thank you, sir.
All right, we have finished up our initial informational stage, we're moving to old business. And we have on the agenda again Kylie Harper-Certain petition to vacate public utility easement for public right of way. And Joe Certain is here representing our petitioner. Joe, anything you want to add to our conversation today?
Thank you.
Gentlemen, Mr. Mallory or Mr. Burton, do you have any questions for Mr. Certain?
Uh, no, I, I didn't hear everything Joe said, but I, I did read the email from Kyle. And it's obvious that we've done everything we need to do as far as the legality of it, so I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, you are free to make a motion, Mr. Mallory?
Yes, I would, I would approve with the vacation of the property off of Meridian and 67th Street.
I'll second.
You have a motion with support, any further discussion from the commissioners?
No.
No.
I would say that I, I had played 20 questions with Mr. Persinger. He assures me that obligation wise, we've done everything that we are supposed to do and I feel comfortable with it. Just wanted to make sure that you gentlemen did and then open it up and see if we have anyone else that wants to speak to that issue. Just for my information, Mr. Dix is our user number two caller, is that video or is that? Is this the product that's online today?
Yeah.
Very good, just wanted to check, want to make sure there were no, no one else in the area that wanted to make comment on this particular vacation. All right, we do have a motion on the floor with support. Gentlemen, you ready to vote?
Yes.
Roll call, please. Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
All right. Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
All right. Joe, if you get it to us, we can do our signatures, take it to the auditor's office, we pretty much do that internally. Point of report.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right, we will continue on in our agenda. And Grant County Economic Growth Council grant application. We had talked about these items in some of our dealings upstairs on the floor. Just wanted you gentlemen to be aware and that we acknowledge in a public meeting, the Growth Council had asked us to be the elected entity that would allow them to put out an application for the COVID-19 immediate response. And I'll read a couple paragraphs just to again reinforce what, what we were doing here. The grant funds that were being applied go directly toward expanding and funding capacity for the COVID-19 loan fund. An emergency loan fund to help businesses survive the economic impact of the COVID-19 global health crisis. COVID-19 Loan Fund assists businesses located and operating within the county of Grant County, Indiana, that have less than 30 employees. COVID-19 Loan Fund helps Grant County businesses offset revenue losses, pay bills, sponsor sick pay for coworkers, transition to remote working, et cetera. Further, the COVID-19 Loan Fund aims to help retain employees who might otherwise have been laid off or due to forced closure or revenue losses during the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically individuals that are LMI and are at great risk of financial harm. We initially had given them authorization to do that from an executive action. And they received the first round of grants. They have already received that money and dispersed $60,000 already from that grant process. They started a second round of grants and again, by executive order, I went ahead and signed to assist in the council. Just need your vote, your recommendation and/or affirmation that we did the right thing in getting those grant funds into Grant County for our businesses.
So what do you need from us, Mark?
We either need to, by consent, approve the action of the executive order that the president made, or we just need to make a motion to continue our COVID-19 response, work with the Growth Council and seek any funding that they can find.
Well, I would move to consent.
I'll second.
Thank you, that's basically what we needed to do, is have it on public record that we're authorized to continue to do that. So I'm going to ask the auditor for a roll call.
Can I ask just one question first, make sure I'm on the same page? I remember seeing some email correspondence with Tim McElroy, and maybe one of his staff members, named Michaela, indicating that the dollars would actually flow through the auditor's office. Is this a different one?
This is the same one.
It is, okay, and you mentioned there had been somebody received and dispersed. I don't recall if, if we received, no one's saying to me, so I wonder.
We need to, we need to confirm that. It says, the Growth Council just completed first round of the COVID-19 Loan Fund, approving fund for eight businesses, $7,500 each. Helped to retain 65 full-time jobs.
See, and that could be they had some of their, they had other money originally outside of this grant.
That could be, or they've already dispersed funds that they have, that money will be coming to you and then.
Okay, that could be, it sounded like it was going to be on a case by case, we would get the money as they actually had them approved.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be a lump sum that's actually happened?
Kind of like FEMA and some of the others, you spend the money and you're reimbursed for it, so we'll clarify that.
I just want to make sure, at this point, I haven't heard in my office that we've received any of that money yet, so. Obviously, I want to make sure we have copies of the applications and the approvals, so we have that for follow-up audit process, so.
Written roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Mallory?
Aye.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next, I am on... Next item on the agenda, we have Dawn's Cleaning Solution Proposal for this disinfecting common areas in May. I don't know if you gentlemen got a copy of this, but she did send us a proposal here to Grant County Commissioners. It's our pleasure to do your contracted cleaning. You have requested we provide staff to disinfect all common areas in the courthouse complex corrections building twice a day, morning and afternoon, Monday through Friday for the month of May. Our bid for this added service would be $1,548 for the month. We look forward to serving you and the employees and citizens of Grant County during this pandemic situation. Basically, what we're doing is, we're, we're working to comply with the governor's order in opening back up the state. At all those areas, we have to provide safe, clean, disinfected areas for our employees, as well as in the future, citizens coming back in to do work in the courthouse, the public areas of the annex. And it seems to be with the taxing work that we have on our maintenance department right now, that this makes sense to bring in this, this part-time cleaner. I think we've pretty much gotten a thumbs up from the council president, understanding we have to do this expense right now. So I would seek your permission and motion to pay Dawn for this added monthly service for the month of May.
Okay, is, and I just wanna be sure I understand, Mark, this is just for the month of May right now?
That is correct, just for the month of May.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion with support to approve this additional COVID cleaning. Any other discussion or questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call. Okay, Mr. Burton?
Hi.
Mr. Mallory?
Hi.
And Mr. Bartlett?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. That, that'll help us continue to do things. The employees were greeted this morning. Gentlemen, you saved yourselves by staying at home. They had to have their temperatures checked when they came in this morning. They were kind of surprised with that. But we're doing our very best to comply with what the governor and the feds want too. We will go to our next items of business, and we have a review of current pay requests and release of RFP for Phase 2. Todd Journal is with us, I don't see Terry's with, right?
No, Todd's hitting Terry this morning. And really, it's just a couple informational things. We've got a certified request for payment packet from the contractors. That takes us about 85 or 90% through. Basically, the work is done in the dispatch center. All the work contracted thus far, which includes the general board. Back out for rebids and those back in, May 18. Access floor and dispatch area is complete. Everything else, it is nearly final connections to the PBC equipment this week, so. Waiting on it to get finished. We've got dispatch furniture arriving on Wednesday, about half of that.
Oh, damn, no problem to me. Basically, fellows, we just said that we've basically complete with the construction, with the exception of carpet and tile that's still has to be put down. And then the other, the other item is release, release of the RFP, technology RFP to approve signal propagation to the south part of the county. And really, it's the entire county. That RFP, the advertised Wednesday, May 6th, the pre-submission meeting will be May 18th, and then the RFP is due June 15th. All right, so the review of current pay requests. Do we have fees for you guys, the amount of $25,000? I think that's for the completion of the RFP. I didn't.
Your phone ringing, your phone's ringing.
And is that, does that come out of our due, I believe so, yeah. Does that sound right?
Yeah, he's, he's got a couple of those. There's a bill on here with the $25,000, that comes out in 12/22. There's also one of the other lists, $23,974, $76,000, that will come out of the bond proceeds, $48,06.
Damn. Just here, okay. You got it?
I'm seeing one thing here for J and K for 13 to 8. Is that something that we need to pay, or is that just?
Eight, this, that was the question. Okay. I have $18,000, yeah, that's.
I included that, so. So that's the segregated costs for technology-related items for Phase 1 of the technology, which will be funded through and we, we sent an email last week to Stephanie Seber. See how they wanna do that, whether they were going to send us paycheck, put it in that account.
All right, just to make it clear, we are, I haven't given any kind of calendar to pay this yet to the commissioner's office, because we don't know how the money's gonna be handled.
Right, so we're waiting.
That really, this was really to kind of initiate it, to give them a transaction that they could.
So that's, that's where we are with that, that's good. But right now, the main thing we need to do process this $25,000. Are we, on the whole, where are we in our two-week time frame? Are we just in our second week? We had a two, two-week hiatus on paying bills, see where we.
So I have the second week.
Yeah. We'll just need to check, check on that this.
Just so you know, because April did send an email asking what account we're checking. So the $25,000 and the $333,312 total, that list, and I gave her account numbers now. Once you guys approve it, then we will do. So she does have this number, but I gave her that. So, Mark, you guys, when you're ready to do that.
Again, I think this is under your normal payment process. I did, just, just for your information, did a walkthrough last, last Friday. Things are really looking good over there, gentlemen. I'll send you some pictures so you can see. But I, I walked the, I walked the entire core area of the EMA bit area, as well as the central dispatch. Starting to look very impressive. I'm glad we've done it. Had a few headaches, but it's gonna be worth it once we get central dispatch up and running. We do need, we already established approval on that RFP, or do we need that today? We already authorized it to be advertised?
I think the last meeting they, they came to, I think Terry was here then, you gave approval to them to actually receive RFPs or bids, and you actually gave them approval to go out there and solicit.
Yeah, and proceed with the process, is what you've done this morning.
Okay.
This is just telling you now that, right, we've had, we've set it out for advertising. So we're anticipating that those RFPs will be on the 18th, so.
Yeah.
June 15th.
June 15th, okay.
And then the technology committee will all right, and bring their recognition. Very good. Right. Anything else to update or ask us for right now?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
She has something for me.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, all. One more item that I have, gentlemen, before we open it up technically for any public comment. I don't know if you were able to hear the governor on Friday. You followed any of the restrictions or recommendations that he's made. He has said that, of course, by, by law, we have the right to restrict some of those things more so than he has done. We cannot relax them any more than he's already directed. But it would not be my intention to be any more restrictive than what the governor's policy is right now. Do you have any concerns or areas we should talk about, potentially restricting some of the areas that the governor talked about?
I, I don't.
I'm sorry, my dogs are participating. No, I don't see any reason for any further restrictions, Mark.
All right. As, as of May 4th, technically, social gatherings can go up to 25 people. And at this point, I, I wanna still recommend that we at least restrict our public meetings to 10 or less. Till we get a little bit of a, more of a handle on this. And until the governor retracts the state of emergency, we can still be using WebEx as the means of our, our meetings, the council meetings, all the other meetings that are public. But, but we need to make sure that we authorize that, right?
I concur with that. I'm sorry. Yeah, I agree.
All right, just so that we have that noted, we'll continue to run that policy until the governor releases the state of emergency. At that point, then all municipalities, all county governments, all special groups would have go back to a public meeting forum. We won't do that until the governor releases the state of emergency.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty, this is a public forum, and if you would like to address the Board of Commissioners, we invite you to. Give us your name, your address, and any concerns or comments you have. Noting that there's no one in the room besides the personnel working on this meeting. And we have no others except the media that are with us today. Take media questions later on. Mr. Burton, Mr. Mallory, do you have any things that you would like to add to the meeting today?
No.
No. Nor do I.
All right, then we have completed the task set forth on the agenda. And with your permission, I will call this meeting into recess.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much.
Okay, see you later.
See ya, see ya, Ron.
Yeah, take care, Mark.